Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council on October the 15th at 7:02. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Jillian Lewis from the West Covina Hills Seventh Day Abbott Church afterwards, a Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Girl Scout Junior Troop 1994 members Avery Alvarez, Jordan Lee, Sophia Guerrero, and I'm going to miss her name up. Delighty Epanosa. Will we all raise please?
Let's pray. Precious Lord, there are a lot of proclamations on the agenda for tonight. We thank you for the occasion for each and every one of these. Lord, we also pray for there to be wisdom in the business portion of this meeting, that your Spirit will be here and guide the proceedings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Will we please have our Girl Scout Junior Troop come forward up here please and present our Pledge of Allegiance? Do we have a microphone? Let's all face your pride please, put your hands over your hearts, and ladies, it's up to you. You start it please.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please. Oh, wait until she gets back to her seat.
Councilman Castellanos?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viatto?
Present.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Here.
Mayor Potemwou?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to bring up from closing session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda? At this time, I do have a few presentations due. Before I do, I'm going to stay up here and let our city clerk, please come forward, and he's going to give the oath of office to our new fire chief. There he comes.
Raise your right hand to repeat after me. Maybe we should just walk. Make it quite easy. Now you're ready, okay. I state your name.
I am Mr. Doug.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I bear true faith and allegiance.
The mic's off.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's on, can you hear me? First off, I'd like to thank God, and I'd like to thank my wife and support, and I would like to thank the city council, the mayor, and Mr. City Manager for giving me this opportunity to be the fire chief of West Covina Fire Department. I love being a fireman, I've always loved being a fireman, and I'm loving being a fireman here in West Covina, and I'm looking forward to the future of the West Covina Fire Department and doing the best that I can to take us to the next chapter. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, at this time, we do have a few presentations to give. I have one for first and foremost, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Could I invite Erica Taylor of the West Covina Police Department, please come forward? It's okay, take your time. We'll give a minute to that. Yes, at this time, like I said, it's for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and at this time, I'd like to have Erica, please say a few words what Breast Cancer Month is about? Would you like to say something? I'm putting you on the spot now.
Just a bit. So, thank you for recognizing breast cancer where in this month. As many of you know, we've had several people within our department alone that have struggled and fought with breast cancer. One of our family members that just went over to Covina is now fighting her cancer. So, we are raising funds for breast cancer research for City of Hope. We have items for sale. If anyone's interested, I have them with me, they're $10 apiece. All the money that we raise goes straight to City of Hope for breast cancer awareness and the fight against breast cancer.
Thank you. Before I do present you with this proclamation, for a little bit of information on it, you know, breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed cancer in women. And so, you know, over 268,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 41,760 will die from the disease. So, this is very important for everyone to know, and I know my wife goes every year or two, whatever she's supposed to do for it, and I think it's something all women should do. And I think the men should realize that, you know, if you're married, or you have a girlfriend, this is something very important, don't be afraid to tell them. If you're putting it off, do not put it off, because their lives mean that much to us. So, at this time, I would like to present you with the proclamation. I'm not going to read it all, I think it's where as, where as, where as, and I could go all the way down, but let's just let everyone know, this is very, very important, and it's my honor to present this proclamation with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this next run, we really didn't have anyone to come up and receive it, so I'm going to ask our city clerk, Assistant City Clerk, to come up and accept this proclamation for us. For those who don't know what it's about, it's about the 100th anniversary celebration of the 19th Amendment for women's voting. You know, this is for about women. So, I felt, I've heard other cities and the states were doing it, and I wanted to make sure the city of West Covina was on board that we do the same thing, and you know, it's an honor for us to present this proclamation. So, on behalf of the 100th anniversary of celebration for the 19th Amendment, I'd like to present this to you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
And get out and vote.
I caught her off-guard. And the next run is proclamation for National Community Planning Month. May I have Jeff Anderson, please, come forward? This is proclamation for National Community Planning Month, October 2019. Jeff, why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on?
I think I'll keep it short, but planning is about planning for what the city's going to look like tomorrow. So, this is National Planning Month, we celebrate that. This year's theme is Planning for Infrastructure That Benefits All. So, that highlights things like roadways, transportation systems, housing, and parks with strength in communities, boost the economy, expand opportunity, and promote equitable development. I do also want to include our planning commissioners, who I think I saw three of them. We have Greg Huckas, maybe you can come up, because I think it's important to recognize that they're the people in your community who are charged with doing this. Don Holtz is here, and then Glenn Kennedy is also here. So, come on up. They're shy, so. So, we do want to celebrate their role, because it's a difficult role that they have, they have to make decisions sometimes that are very difficult between what some community members want and what other community members want, and it's not an easy job, and so, I want to celebrate them, and turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. It's not an easy job for them, because sometimes we overrule them. There are all these studies and stuff like that, and then it comes to the city council, and we may not agree with them. So, it's, that's what it's all about, that's what the government works like. So, what it is, I just want to say, now hereby, I Lloyd Johnson, Mayor of West Covina, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as National Community Planning Month in the city of West Covina. There you go, guys. Thank you, guys, for tuning in. Want to get a picture? Stay here, guys, come up here. Okay. And now, I do have a few certificates I'd like to give, but this time, I'd like to call the, oh, please, Chief, please. No, turn it over to you, I don't know who all's here, but you know who they are, and you can present the certificates, and I'll be here with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I have Nikki Santoya, please, come join me? Nikki is a senior operator with our dispatch center. Not with her today is Supervisor Mary Rodriguez and dispatcher, we call her JJ, but Juanita Franco, and I can just tell you right now, she's probably pretty nervous, don't worry, I'm not going to give you the mic here. But this is about an act of kindness that goes unrecognized most of the time, but this one, I felt, was worthy of sharing with you. So, let me share the story with you, and you'll see what I'm talking about. So, on October 2nd, Juanita, who's not here, she took a phone call from an elderly gentleman. We later learned his name was Cuddy, I don't know his last name, but Cuddy called in to explain that his walker was missing, and in fact, it had been stolen. He left it outside, the walker was stolen, and inside the walker, he had some very important paperwork. So, he was able to make his way over to his neighbor's house, and when he got to his neighbor's house, he asked the neighbor, can you call the police for me? My walker's missing, had some important paperwork, and the neighbor obliged to him, and he called. The dispatchers, after receiving the story, felt, hey, here's an elderly person, what if this was our grandfather? What if this was somebody, I mean, he's missing his walker? You know, walkers cost a lot of money, right? And here's a guy who obviously needs it, and it's missing. So, through some additional follow-up, they found out, through the neighbor, that Mr. Cuddy was using a nine-iron golf club to get around, and that really touched the hearts of our dispatchers. So, they gathered together, they put their heads together, and they decided, you know what? We are going to buy Mr. Cuddy a walker. That happened on October 2nd of this year, and on October 4th, through the efforts of our dispatch, our ladies, they bought Mr. Walker a, I mean, Mr. Cuddy, a walker, and presented it to him on October 4th. So, let's give a round of applause to our dispatchers.
You don't have to say anything.
No, I was going to shake your hand.
I want you to say, I have a certificate for you, guys. You don't have to say anything. Chief already said you don't have to say anything.
We do have three certificates we have. Were they all clear or was it saying, I'm going to present it with all three of them, to all three of the dispatchers with the chief's ass? Please, we didn't get those so much. And while I'm thankful, you know, by the city council, and our complete staff, we want to thank you for everything.
If there's anyone that'd like to speak, please fill out a yellow card and present it to our Assistant City Clerk, she'll call you up and order, and if you don't want to speak, we do have the orange cards back there, you can fill out and turn them in, and she'll read them. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to call Jim Grivitch forward, followed by Jerry Potras, followed by Robert Giestad.
Two meetings ago, I appeared before the city council, and I talked about the salary increase item that appeared on the agenda tonight, before it was on the agenda, and one of the councilmen made a comment that my use of the word bankruptcy was a scare tactic, and as a result, I felt that necessary tonight, when it's actually on the agenda for your adoption, to spell out the details of precisely what I mean about if you adopt this salary increase tonight, and if you adopt a similar salary increase for the fire department, and if the sales tax increase does not pass, you are voting for bankruptcy. So, I want you to understand exactly what you're doing tonight. Unfortunately, the section of that recommendation that talked about fiscal impact was, in my mind, deficient. It only talked about this year, and so, I want to go through what the actual meaning of it is, and I've presented a chart to you, and it is up on the board. Last July in 18, the city had a balance of 22 million. Think of a balance as the balance in your checkbook, how much cash the city has on hand. 22 million, sounds like a lot of money. Well, last fiscal year, we just got the fourth quarter report for the end of the year, there was a deficit in last year, so the city lost 1.2 million dollars of the balance, and now they're down to 21 million. And because the city has been deficit spending forever, I'm going to make an assumption that this year, there's going to be another 1.2 million dollar deficit. I haven't sent financials for this year, but it is the culture of the city, that that's what they do. So, we're putting the balance down to 19.6. The police raise that's on your agenda for today is stated to be costing $600,000. I costed it out in great detail, and I've attached a copy of the detail to this report. It's a listing of all of the policemen in the city, and how much money they make, and what a 12% increase will do in terms of cost, and my calculation is $900,000 for that increase, not $600,000. I did have a discussion with your finance director about it, and we have a disagreement about whether overtime should be included in the calculation. I think it should. The overtime that the police are working is a constant, it's been a constant for years, and that's going to be increased by 12%, just like everything else, so that's why we have that difference. But the bigger impact is if you adopt a similar increase for the fire department, that's another $700,000. And the real issue here is there's no budget attached to what you're doing today, and you have a policy that says you won't overdraft your budget, and here you are, adopting an expenditure of $900,000 today with no budget. That's an overdraft, that's a violation of your own budget policy. But that's only the beginning. If you adopt a similar increase for the fire department, that's, my calculation is another $700,000 overdraft deficit. But the real impact is not this year, and that's what I want to stress. Without a sales tax increase next year, the best you can hope for is a relatively small increase in revenue, maybe a couple million dollars, and it's not likely to be that good, because sales tax is tanking. And this salary increase, when you calculate it out for next year, is going to cost 3.9 million dollars. There's an impact that you just can't absorb. There's also an impact next year that you can't absorb, because there's going to be a purse cost increase in unfunded liability of another 2 million. So, you're basically $6 million short next year, and I'm saying all of this if the tax increase doesn't pass. And the bottom line of all of this is I'm asking you not to act today, and be fiscally responsible, and wait until you find out whether you have the money to pay for it. If I were an employee in this city, I would be scared. This is a scary situation for people that work here. What happens when cities go bankrupt? That means people don't get paid. If I were a city employee, knowing that that's a possibility in this environment, I'd be looking for another job. And I've been involved with agencies that went through this, Oakland, Compton, Los Angeles, San Francisco. My job was to clean up the mess, and I know how awful the mess is. Don't do this today. Think about it some other time, when you know the money's there. The money is not there now, today. Thank you.
Jerry Potras, West Covina resident. It's true that cities such as nearby Glendora and Covina raise their sales tax to the current state limit. It's also true that city councils in those cities that wrote the sales tax increase measure, it was the council that wrote it, not the union. It's also true that in West Covina, it is the Public Safety Union or Unions, not our city council, that developed an initiative to raise our city's sales tax to the current state cap. The Unions did not go after the additional funds to help either the residents or the city. They went after the additional revenue to help them. It's also true that in order to get the required number of petitions signed by West Covina voters, lies, real lies, were told by the signature gatherers. Some of the lies were told by the paid signature gatherers, but some of the lies were told by public safety officials. I know, they told it firsthand to me. If the union initiative was such a good deal for residents, the lies to get the signatures would not have been needed. Doing this MOU immediately after the signature process was finished is telling the union and the residents that bad behavior is okay. It is also true, I think, that the MOU speaks of pay being the issue with recruitment and retention. I don't have hard facts, but I'll assume that is true. When you do a huge pay increase with no money to pay for the increase, and only a dream of possible new taxes, you are telling new employees to stay away, and current employees to leave. I was a public sector employee, I wouldn't stay here. The MOU that is before you tonight is unsustainable and not fiscally responsible. Please do not reward the bad behavior. Send it back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Robert Giestad, Crown Castle. Crown Castle has reviewed the five denial resolutions before you and item four on consent. We request that the city pull the item, and reconsider its decision to deny these five sites, and declare that we would be willing to sign a tolling agreement to allow time for such reconsideration. We note that to date, even though a tolling agreement has been discussed with the council, no tolling agreement has been signed, and that alone forms the basis for a challenge of the decision. With regard to the denial resolutions before you as a further basis for challenge, we note there are several critical flaws in the resolutions. The FCC order requires that design guidelines be reasonable and objective. Crown followed the exact design identified in the guidelines, both in terms of its written description and in the drawings depicted in the guidelines, for which the guidelines recommend approval. By denying the five sites on the basis of aesthetics, the five resolutions directly contradict the city's enacted preferred design for street light attachments. In addition, the FCC order prohibits design standards that are more burdensome than those applied to other types of, other types of infrastructure, sorry, infrastructure deployments. In this city, you have top-fed power light poles that have a base pole, a luminaire, and a pole-top extension above the luminaire, a streetlight pole design that is almost identical to the design that we are proposing. The five resolutions also contain two incorrect assertions. The resolutions claim the record shows there is no coverage issue. To the contrary, we demonstrated with maps that T-Mobile does have a coverage issue, as well as a capacity issue, because the signal is weak in this area and does not provide quality in-building coverage. Crown Representative Kyle Berry explained that signal weakness is a coverage issue. The resolution claims that there are dozens of superior alternative locations, this is not credible. Yes, there are several other streetlights in this neighborhood, but not one of them would be more acceptable to the city council than those we selected, because all of them are in residential zones, and the city's purported opposition to these sites is based on the opposition of a group of residents that oppose small cells in any residential zone, anywhere in the city. In conclusion, having walked the neighborhood and spoken to several residents of this neighborhood who were pleased that T-Mobile service could be improved, we believe the council is doing the city a disservice that can be rectified. the city a disservice that can be rectified if the council is willing to reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Next speaker, Frederick Sykes, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Colleen Rosati.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the city staff, and members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, forty-one-year resident of West Covina, retired deputy sheriff, also former mayor of this city. The speaker before me asked you to pull the item regarding those five hideous, awful cell towers. I ask that you do the same. Please pull it and review. Be careful with your review, especially with case law. Because as you can see, they came back tonight. Why? Because they don't understand the word no. We had a number of residents, time and time again, come in, beg and plead, please do not do this to us. We work very hard for the property that we have acquired. We work very diligent to keep our community safe and beautiful. And these folks just run over us time and time again. And there's no one in here tonight that's a resident that lives here that's saying, give me more cell towers. I haven't seen anybody come through and say, give me more cell towers. Some of us, before we got involved with the city, speaking for myself in particular, I didn't know cell towers and how they looked. I didn't really think about it. I have a phone, just like most of you. Didn't even really think about how it works. All I know is that when I was born, I was, it was attached to the wall to talk on the phone. And then we came along with technology. And now I have in my pocket. But it still remains that it has to be attached to the ground somewhere. And at Shadow Oak Park, when I go there, I see how we've been disregarded. We have a master plan that calls for our community to have subterranean infrastructure for our utilities. You can leave Shadow Oak Park where the boxes are clear. You see three towers there, almost as big as your garage. You have one cell tower, but it's fooling you because it's disguised. There are two towers designed to look like one. Then we have a missile near the tennis courts. It's a fake tree, but when you look up close, it's a cell tower. You can drive by all day and you really won't notice it at forty miles an hour. But when you get out your car and you walk, you'll see it. And if you look at the, the laws and the, and the plan, the general plan, you'll see that tower should not, the boxes should not be in our faces. It should be hidden. And a good example is at Lemon and Amor Road. You go there, on the north side of that intersection, you have these million-dollar-plus homes. And then on the south side of the street, you'll have to look to find the tower. But when you see this fake tree and you look and you see the bolts, and it's in the ground, the infrastructure is in the ground. We could have did the same thing with every tower, but we didn't demand it. Because when you check the four sixty forms, you can see why. That's about the money that comes to your campaign. There are certain folks that gave and made those decisions. They have ties, financial ties, to the cellphone companies. So they want to make way for them whenever they can to make money. This is us. The city is made for us, for people, not for businesses to just do whatever they want to do and deface our community. Please say no in every way you need to, including what's according to case law. Make sure they know what no means. You may have to repeat it fifteen times, but do what's necessary. Again, according to case law and every way you can say no, say no. Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'm coming tonight to speak on item six, which, you know, I fully back everything that Jim Grivage and Jerry Potras has said. But additionally, you know, our problem is we don't have enough officers. By having this twelve percent raise, we're going to put a burden on our city financially. Where, how are we going to hire more officers? You know, that's number one thing. How are we going to hire more police, more fire if we can't, you know, balance our budget? Let's see, you and Dario both ran on fiscal responsibility. How is this responsible? You know, let's sunset this until later and see how much our finances are doing. Plus, we're due for a financial downturn in the next year or two. So, you know, what's going to happen then? How are we going to keep afloat? How are we going to keep the officers we have? How are we going to keep the firemen we have? You know, bankruptcy may be a scary word, but it's reality. You know, our cash is dwindling. We don't, you know, we're outspending what we're bringing in. We have great revenue coming in. We have, you know, more than five percent, but we're losing it. We're not able to replenish our, our stock. Also, the other thing is, you know, we were promised overtime reports. Today, we haven't seen it. When was the last fiscal report given out in detail to the community? On another item, you know, I brought up in social media, we have a problem with houses that are owned overseas and becoming Airbnbs and everything else. And it made me think, you know, we need more revenue from our officers, more police, and I would like to see more city programs like Ballman Park has that's not run by outside community, outside businesses that, you know, I, my daughter went to a program that was run by the city, company never showed up. We ended up coming in for a refund because it wasn't consistent. By having a tariff on outside, you know, owners for public or for business buildings, commercial buildings and residential will have the ability to bring more revenue in the city and also make it a little more appealing for local buyers to buy rather than residents, you know, out-of-country investors coming in, buying properties on the cheap and placing the homeowner dream outside of the realm of, you know, local residents. You know, look at the house prices. They're not dropping, they're only going up. And how many houses in West Covina are actually owned by U.S. citizens versus investment overseas?
Colleen Rosati, followed by Forrest Wilkins, followed by Sarah Love.
Good evening, council. Colleen Rosati. I'm here tonight to briefly talk about item six, West Covina Police Officer Memorandum of Understanding. The staff report given has a brief background on the current employment status, along with the financial proposal for your consideration. In my opinion, since I teach economics, this is about economics, which is about making choices, needs and wants. What we need to survive is air, water, food and shelter. And in today's environment, we need public safety. In nineteen thirty-seven, the city of West Covina said, we want our own police department. And want and need has stayed steadfast for the last eighty years. This proposal, in my opinion, has three components to it. The first, the fact that the POA has been working without a contract for the last three years. The second, like many who work in the public sector, have been asked due to economic downfall to be patient until things get financially better. The third, recruitment and retention. Why is the city of West Covina having such a hard time retaining our officers and recruiting new? What these three factors before you tonight have in common, in my opinion, the answer to many is money. And I don't believe that. I don't believe that it's totally about money. In my opinion, I think it's about the respect and doing what's right. It's about doing what's fair and equitable. Those of us that work in the public sector, including myself, whether it's in education or public safety, no, we're not in it for the money. We know dealing with the public is not always going to be easy. We also know that without hesitation, we enjoy our jobs. And because it allows us the opportunity to educate, to protect, to serve and to make a difference. And regarding to the staff report, I think we need to ask the city and ourselves as a community, have we been fair? Has it been fair to allow the POA to work without a contract for the last three years? Have we shown and given value to the job they do to protect us in this community? Has the city and the department shown respect and leadership needed to retain the officers we have and entice the officers we want? As a community and a city, I think we need to put our personal opinions aside and focus on what's fair and what's equitable. For the POA is not asking anything out of line. The vote that you make tonight, make it accordingly. If you feel it's time to be fair and equitable, then voting for the contract will allow the city to move forward on many levels. It may restore the respect and dignity not only for our police department, but for the city as well. Your decision tonight, in my opinion, comes down to what's fair and equitable. It comes down to making choices. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents, those who are watching on TV. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mayor Johnson, Mayor Protem Wu, and Councilwoman Lopez. Thank you for keeping the local municipal code law as it has been for decades, not allowing gas stations to sell alcoholic beverages. There were several people that made presentations, comments about why we should keep that law, came from different angles and so forth, but the bottom line was alcohol and gas do not mix. Thank you for standing up and keeping the law the way it is. This petition gathering that I was involved in over ten years ago was a grassroots situation. As I mentioned then, we had over seven, we had seven hundred and sixty-seven residents and it just wasn't one section of the city, it was throughout the city, who signed their petition. And as the mayor pointed out, he was one of those who signed the petition and even took out of his pocket a letter he wrote to the editor, which was very appreciative. But that is helping keeping West Covina a family-friendly city. Thank you for listening to the residents and not listening to two gas station owners.
Sarah Love, followed by Andrew Tachias.
Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name is Sarah Beth McCarr-Glove and I've been a resident and taxpayer in West Covina for over fifteen years. I have three items on my list tonight, although I think number three is the most important now that I look at the audience. The first is regarding the crosswalk on Puente and Nora, whose lights still work. It's a school crossing during the day, but that's the only place besides Sunset that we can safely cross with my senior dog. I read that the crosswalk lights and five other crosswalk lights were being removed and not being replaced. I'm not sure about that, but please, please don't remove them without replacing them because I live on North Yelton and crossing Puente to go down to the dog park is like crossing a street in Obragon. I have to like shine a flashlight at the cars, wave my arms, scream, and they still don't stop. So they come within an inch of hitting us and then, of course, my middle finger goes up. But my kids also use the light across walk over on Nora to go to the park too. So we need the Nora crosswalk or else we have to walk by the bus dwellers on Sunset or just fight the odds of being killed on Puente and North Yelton. It's no bueno. The second one is Del Norte Park. Man, what a disgrace. I mean, people with nasty blankets are now sleeping in the park on the dark baseball field. The bicycle homeless table has grown exponentially and I see the blanket people looking into cars and walking up the street. But I don't want my kids around needles or nasty blankets and neither do the parents of the baseball players. We used to have a great watch commander, David Lee, that would help clean this stuff up. And yes, I know the state of California is tyrannical and there are many things that law enforcement can't do, but there are things that law enforcement can do. And, you know, how the police make contact every day. We saw a lot of police presence for about three weeks, but now, no. You know, they can just drive by all the time, you know? I have nine nieces and a nephew that use the park along with my old faithful dog, so please consider this. And last but not least, oh yes, I'm speaking on behalf of both myself and my husband, William Love, on this issue. The issue is the increase in sales tax on the next ballot. We're very disappointed in the council's silence about the tax and the statement from the union spokespeople that let the voters decide is BS. Because many of us know that the POA, AKA, Union paid a PAC to gather those signatures and we citizens don't have thirty thousand dollars to fight this. You know, a tax going into the general fund is not acceptable to us and we want to see the council rewrite this tax to cover only unfunded pension liabilities and Sunset winner if that liability is ever paid off. But Mayor Johnson is the only council member who stated his position on the tax. Mayor Protem Wu voted it down last year, so we sort of know his thoughts about it back then, but what about now? Like, why wasn't it addressed as a mother may I, or the rest of you? Tell us why we need it or not. And we get that the California public employee unions have a lot of power and money, so it's hard to cross them. And hey, they have our tax dollars. So the optics of silence just makes it look like four of you are complacent, but I, I hope we're wrong. We can support something that covers the unfunded liability if we need it, but not dumping tax dollars into the general fund so the council can spend out well. No, no, no. So after seeing this, I'm terrified at what the Unions and future councils will do to us, West Covinas, when Prop thirteen is removed by the corrupt lawmakers in Sacramento.
Dear Mayor, dear City Council, my name is Andrew Tachias. I work for, as a police officer for the city of Inglewood and the city of Riverside. In twenty thirteen, I was shot ten times with a rifle and forced to medically retire. I don't have any credentials that you can see right now because I don't wear a G-Shock watch or a thin blue line shirt or Oakley glasses, but my scars will speak for themselves. I grew up in West Covina and currently reside here. As a resident here, I've been extremely unhappy with the police department. In the past three years, I've called the police department on three occasions regarding suspicious vehicles and the response times of the officers have been rather ridiculous. I understand the response should not be that of an emergency response for those calls that I've made, but to wait over an hour each time is kind of bothersome. Every personal contact, though, that I've had with a West Covina police officer has been positive excluding the response time. I found their demeanor to be professional and I appreciate the time they have taken to explain things to me. I had the opportunities to spend my last three years with the Riverside Police Department working in personnel. And now that my dissatisfaction stemming from the West Covina Police Department derives directly from the former city council, city manager and mayor, this has the potential to create a wide variety of problems. You lose trust with the city in a way in which you guys conduct business and people like me who support police officers may no longer support the department. and people like me who support police officers may no longer support the department. That in turn increases the safety risk for officers when they are responding to calls in the city. I'm here today to personally let you know that I support the pay increase for the police officers, a sales tax increase, and I propose that you look into parking permits for street parking as a way to generate increased revenue and reduce crime and minimize the issue with the homeless. Regarding the pay increase for the officers, as you know, it costs a lot of money to hire an officer. When the pay is not competitive to comparison cities, you will lose officers the moment they get approbation to other departments. This becomes an endless cycle where the city will not reach adequate staffing levels. Response times will continue to be long because there are not enough officers working. You lose important expertise and city knowledge by not retaining officers. By reaching proper staffing levels, you allow for more opportunity for the officers to promote, to do special assignments, in which is, which is an incentive for them to stay at the department. And when the staffing levels increase, more opportunity arises, like having a substation at the mall, the Eastland Shopping Center down by Azusa and Neymar, increased school police, and a greater presence in the city. These officers put their lives on the line every day to show up to work. They should not be paid the same or less than someone working in a much safer and controlled environment. There is a constant wear and tear on their body, drastic hormonal changes from the adrenaline dumps, and a constant influx in heart rate and blood pressure and long hours away from their family for the purpose of providing a service to this community. As a resident here, I support the pay increase because we have a duty to take care of those taking care of us. Thank you.
Final speaker card tonight, J.D.
Good evening, Council, Chairperson DeRue. If we have to give pay increases to maintain integrity from our police and fire, we're going to go to that poorhouse a lot sooner than Mr. Rivers even mentioned. I'm a little disappointed because the POA, the hired signature gatherers that were hired by the POA were misinformed, ill-informed, just downright dishonest in some cases. But I find that to be true with this council, with the exception of Mr. Lloyd Johnson, our mayor. Although Ms. Shoemaker said it wasn't any of our business, I think I attribute that to all four of you other than Mr., than our mayor, simply because you said you had nothing to talk about with regards to this until the voters decided. Tonight, you're willing to consider adopting a four-and-a-half-year MOU with a 12% increase predicated on a tax that hasn't been approved by the voters. Why are you willing, and even more importantly, you weren't willing to discuss this MOU with the constituents that you represent? You denied us the opportunity to hear your input as to how you were going to use this money. Those that gathered signatures had placards that said that this was for getting police cars and new equipment for the fire department? Well, according to what I read, it's for retention and pay increases. There's nothing here about new vehicles, no new canine dogs. But all this was taking place maybe in your office, Mr. Wu, because you seem to like to have meetings there, but out of sight of those that you're coming to for the money. You should be ashamed of yourself. You, Ms. Shoemaker, two meetings back, said that you didn't mean to say that it wasn't any of our business, that you just weren't going to discuss this until the voters decided. The voters have not decided. I don't even think they validated those signatures yet, have they? Maybe I fell asleep, and maybe the vote's already taken place. But how could you have the tenacity tonight to even place this on the agenda for consideration? Projecting $4 million, and it's a projection, because the economy is a roller coaster. So I don't know how in the world you can think that you can promise this POA and all the officers a pay increase of 12% and a CPI of 3% 2016, 17, and 18 on just a hope, on the hope that, one, the voters approve your tax increase, and, two, that it actually generates the amount of money that you're hoping will cover your promises. I think you have been completely dishonest with those you represent, Ms. Shoemaker, Mr. Wu, Ms. Viado, and Mr. Castellanos, and I hope you're rewarded during elections. Thank you.
Final speaker card, Steve Bennett.
Good evening, Council, staff, public. So I got two things I'm going to talk about. First of all, I'm going to hit Senate Bill 732. I'm hoping you guys are opposing that. So 732 is in the state legislature, it's currently stalled in the state legislature. It is a bill that would allow, and it has to pass, signed by the governors, passed both houses and signed by the governor to be approved, to allow an air quality management district to even try to pass a tax. Right now, it's not even allowed in the state legislature or in the state of California for an air quality management district to have a tax. So you heard about lies, you heard about misinformation, you heard about all this stuff. You guys have heard about it a lot. I'm not going to kind of go through all the lies and misinformation out there. But one of them was, oh, air quality management district's going to pass a tax and take your money, keep it in West Covina. They can't. They can't do it. It's got to pass both houses, go through the governor's desk, in order for that to happen. So Senate Bill 732, I urge you to oppose that. The other thing about 732 that's interesting is that 10.25 that everyone talks about is the magic cap in California for sales tax. That actually raises those cities that are at 10.25, which if our magic tax over here comes through, we'll be at 10.25. It'll raise us to 11.25. The 10.25 means nothing when Senate Bill 732, if it passes. So being that, Mr. Wu, you're against taxes, I'm assuming you're going to vote no on 732. You brought it forward, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, by the way. I appreciate your candor and your honesty throughout this whole process. Whether I agree or disagree, you've been pretty straight where you stand, and I hope you oppose it as well. I'm curious where the other three stand, I don't know. I honestly believe you guys would be crazy not to vote in favor of opposing it. But then we're going to talk about the tax measure. And the, I'm just shocked that we haven't even finished counting the signatures at the county yet. I mean, they're validating. Are they going to get it? Probably. I never really said, I didn't think they wouldn't get it. I figured they would. They've got a couple hundred thousand dollars in their PACs that they can put towards this. There's not a resident sitting in this room, there's not a group of residents that come to this council or even in the city, they're going to put $100,000 out. I would guess that they're probably somewhere in the $50,000 to $70,000. They're going to outspend every resident. Why? Because for every dollar they put in, they're going to get $3 to $5 back and pay, or even $100 back and pay. It's not about the POA. I love my police department. Every one of those officers that put their life on the line for me, I respect the hell out of them. Absolutely, firefighters, police officers, military, you name it, I respect them. Absolutely, 100%. And I would absolutely give them anything I could give them. We don't have it to give right now, and taxing the residents who are already struggling is not a good way to go. So as we get into this tax thing and about the pay raise, why are we addressing that before the signatures even counted? J.D., you're right, wherever you are. Absolutely astonished that they're going to bring an agreement for a 12% pay increase. I know they don't have a contract, they need a contract. I support that. Man, I absolutely agree with some of the things they're doing, but we don't have the money. And if you're not taking Jim Grivitch's financial opinion and you're taking others' opinions, you know, to give you an example, my wife and I shop at Sam's Club or Costco, and we go through it all the time, and you kind of window shop, TVs, and whatever else you may be looking for. We do the needs and wants, like our treasurer said. Do I need a new TV? Do I not need a new TV? Is it a need or a want? Man, I can justify anything as a need just based on what I'm talking about. We need our police department, yes, and we need them to be satisfied. But if you talk to Chief Bell, I bet you money we have people, recruits, in the process right now. It takes a year to get them through. We're not hurting for recruitment. We're not. They're in the process. They are in, I guarantee you, if there's nobody in the process, then we have a different issue. It has nothing to do with money. They are in the process. But the problem is, we are trying to play the game of giving these people a lot of money. And for some of you, what's the next one? Fire? Couple of you guys got, what, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 in support and mailers out there? What's the next one after that? The other nine bargaining units in the city? How many of them are going to be coming with a 12% insurance, a raise in cost or raise in pay? How many? Because that's what this is. That $10 million, our Magic Tax Fairy's sitting right there in the front row. He said to the previous council, "All you're going to do is blow it on raises." Well, we have a new council, Mr. Magic Tax Fairy, and guess what? You're going to blow it on raises. That's what you're doing. You're going to spend $10 million like that. Have a good day.
Last final speaker, Angie Gilliam.
Real quickly, Mayor, Council, Protem. A few months ago, I came here to this dais and asked the appointed councilperson to speak on the petition to raise our taxes and to get rid of the auto board. No need to ask, item six is speaking for all of you. Nowhere in the MOU does it speak to the hiring of additional PD. I thought that's what some of you councilpeople and the police department for several years have been asking for, safer streets to protect us all. The residents support the police and fire. That's not what this is about. It's we can't afford to have this 12% increase at this time. So we ask the residents, ask you to think about this, really think about this, and do not support this at this time until we're in a better situation that we can, as others have said, look at this at a reasonable contract that we can all agree and support as residents. Thank you.
We have no more speaker cards?
Okay, seeing no more, I shall close all communications. And now we shall go to our consent calendar. And I know that Councilmember Shoemaker wanted to pull item number six and two. Well, I was going to pull number two too, so it's okay. You pull six, I'll pull two, okay? The reason why, okay, so we have pulled two and six. Do I have a motion to accept all the following items?
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please?
So I'm going to call two rolls. I'm going to call a separate roll for item 12, which is the West Covina Community Service Foundation item. So for the first roll, we're going to call Councilmember Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye, but no to four.
Councilmember Protem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
And I was also noted for. Okay, so now the next round is for the rest of them.
For item 12, Board Member, Councilman Castellanos.
That wasn't me.
It's the consent calendar.
Aye.
Board Member, Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Aye.
Board Member, Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vice Chair, Mayor Protem Wu.
Aye.
Chair, Mayor Johnson.
Aye, passage 5-0. Okay, the first item that we polled on the consent calendar was number two. The reason why I polled it, because it really shouldn't have been on the consent calendar since we had options. And to me, I would like to make a motion that we oppose SB 732 and direct staff to communicate petition, the position of opposition to the city's legislation representatives.
Second.
Any further comment?
Yes. The reason I wanted to pull it is because the last day for the governor to sign bills was October 13th, and I did not see this listed as a two-year bill. So I'm wondering if this bill is even still relevant? If he, if we know if the author is going to bring it back next year? It'll have a different bill number because it died this year, as far as I'm aware. Did we run this by our lobbyist?
Through the chair, if I may. I checked on the status of the bill today, and you are correct. It was re-referred to the Senate Appropriations Committee, didn't pass out of committee by a four-to-three vote, which was pretty much along party lines. Knowing Senator Morlock, he's never going to vote for this bill. It is not, to my understanding, a two-year bill, but it comes to you at the request of the mayor. With these legislative reports, the council directed us to bring these on an agenda, which tends to lag a little bit in terms of being responsive when it's in committee, et cetera. So I'd appreciate a position on this, and the recommendation in the report is to oppose. We can save that thought for next year when it comes back.
So oppose a non-existent bill? Again, I go back to the question of where is our lobbyist? This bill would have been introduced, let's see, actually, it will show on it when it was introduced, February 22nd, 2019. So where is our lobbyist? Why wasn't this, why isn't he bringing it forward? I mean, since I've been on the council, the only bills that have been brought forward have been brought forward by the mayor, not at the request of our lobbyists, not at the request of, hey, this is something that's not good for local control. Every single bill that had to do with ADUs passed. And we had a whole meeting where we discussed how we wanted local control on that. Yet there are three or four bills that passed without one single comment from our lobbyist. And so I have no problem taking a no position on it because I obviously would oppose AQMD being able to come in and tax us, hence the POA's petition. So, I mean, we can take a position, it will mean nothing because the bill is gone, so that you know if he brings it back, or tell our lobbyists to be watching for this bill to come back. Will not come back, but to be reintroduced, so that we can take an official position then. And then I reiterate my request for what our lobbyist is costing us and what our lobbyist is doing.
Okay, and I wanted to second the mayors regarding to oppose this bill. I know it's non-existent, but the city still can take a position against, okay, the AQMD to raise taxes, okay, and to our city and to our, okay, neighborhood. So because it's a waste of money, what it's going to do. So I think the city still can take position, even this bill is already canceled. I read it, the bill is canceled, but we still can take a position, we against the AQMD, okay? And the tax never end.
Is there any more comment? If not, we have a first, I have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, this is passage 5-0. Now, item number six, Councilmember Shoemaker.
Okay, I just wanted to start with a staff kind of highlighting the staff report on what this memorandum of understanding says and does.
Through the chair, I'd be happy to give a brief report. It's really a privilege to be here tonight on what I consider to be a very historic evening for our city. Good labor relations do not appear so distant as they have been. And I think with this report, they're coming to us, and hopefully, they're here to stay. I've got a very brief PowerPoint to go through the salient facts of this. This is a culmination of a meet-and-confer process. The city has nine collective bargaining units, this is one of those. They are all out of contract. And if I could provide just a little context about that, in this business, that is absolutely not the posture to be. In fact, when we applied this year for membership in the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority and were not accepted, the fact that we were out of contract with our labor unions was a serious red flag. This contract gets us from when it expired, which is in 2016, and carries through June of 2021. The reason we're doing this is because our salary and benefits are not competitive. We're having major issues with recruitment, we're having major issues with retention. This is a problem which is sharp and which is real and which we're trying to solve in the current fiscal year in real time. the current fiscal year in real time. This is a chart which is a little hard to read for the audience, and for that, I apologize. But we compare ourselves to other similar cities on a total comp basis for pay and benefits. The salient takeaway here is that of our 10 survey cities, we're in position number nine, which is to say we're in a race here for last place. And our goal is to offer competitive salaries and competitive benefits among the labor market that we're in. The goal is always to have multi-year agreements in place rather than be out of contract or to be doing this on a retrospective basis. And if this MOU is adopted tonight, we will move ultimately, should there be additional revenue come into the city, to the position of third place. Chief and I have talked about this quite a bit, and we share a love of football. I'd like to share a little story. I hail from the Midwest, and in Canton, Ohio, we play tackle football. And I was at a high school football game in Canton, Ohio, one year. My little sister was the drum major. We were sitting in the stands, and in that year, as in several other years, the number one football team in the state of Ohio was Cincinnati Moller. There wasn't anybody else even in second place. But the entire stadium at the Hall of Fame Stadium was shouting at the top of their lungs, "We're number two. We're number two. We're number two." I remember being really baffled by that, like number two's the goal? Well, it's not my goal. My goal would be number one. This doesn't get us there ultimately. It gets us to number three, which I think is a respectable place to be. But I think I've got a great police department. I want it to be the best trained, the best equipped, the best staffed, and I'd like for it to be the best paid. I'm happy to say that out loud. At a cost of right at $600,000 in the current fiscal year, which I'll find in the current budget, hopefully without asking for a budget amendment, just through good economy and efficiency measures, we're going to adjust the pay raises the first pay period in January. And then those raises would carry into the following fiscal year. In the subsequent years, the cost of that increase would be double what it is for half year this year, so it'd be 1.2 million. It also does some things if we get additional revenue in excess of $4 million. It gives our officers a CPI adjustment for each of the three years they were out of contract in an amount which is less than what the CPI actually was. And it moves us to number three on the list, which would cost, at current numbers, about an additional 3.3%. Paulina, can we have the next one? Final point, this is a way to reward and thank our officers who keep us safe. With that, the chief, the finance director and I are available for questions, should you have any.
Does the $600,000, where is that calculation coming from? What does it include?
We've got a spreadsheet. We put onto that spreadsheet every single officer at their current rate of pay and with all of the benefits that are afforded under the collective bargaining agreement. And so, this is a very accurate snapshot of where we are today and what it would cost if we were to raise those salaries by 12%.
The spreadsheet I saw, and maybe I'm just misremembering, shows the increase to the base pay, but I haven't seen anything that takes into account the overtime, meaning we are short police officers. We have officers that are out due to injuries, and so officers are having to do an extraordinary amount of overtime. So, in the $600,000 calculation, did we take into account the extra cost of overtime?
We did not. I'm going to ask Director Byrd to correct me if I get any of this wrong, because this is a really important decision we're asking you to make tonight. We have a separate account in the budget for overtime, and the spreadsheet doesn't reflect it because we really don't know, as we sit here tonight, exactly what that overtime will be. But I think, sitting here, we all know there will be some. Hopefully, we can also drive that number down by increasing staffing levels, not having to have the vacancies lost to people fleeing to other agencies that pay better than we do.
Well, that's the hope, but we still need to be realistic about the fact that our police department is getting to point-of-no-return levels of number of officers. And so, one of the issues with retention and recruiting has been our pay. But even with this increase, we are not going to be able to hire new officers tomorrow. There's still the process of getting them trained here, if their laterals are going through the academy and everything else, if they're not. So, that's why I'm asking what the impact to overtime will be. We may have a separate account. We may have the long-term goal of lowering overtime, but what is the impact? Because this year will have to be a budget adjustment. And how, I mean, where are we now? Can we guesstimate where we're going to be for, as part of the $600,000? Well, I should say, in addition to the $600,000.
That's a great question. I'm going to ask Robin to field it if she can.
So, it is true that overtime is not included in this calculation, and that's one of the things that we're trying to solve, too. And the hope is, or the reality is, is once you raise these salaries, that takes them up to a level where we think we're going to be able to recruit some laterals that will already be trained, and that's going to reduce our overtime. And we have a commitment from the chief that overtime levels, they're going to strive to lower those numbers. And I don't know what else to say to you other than that.
Yeah, and I know that the police department wants to lower overtime levels. I completely understand that, and I know they're going to work towards that. But even lateral officers take somebody help, like three to six months? Is that correct for laterals? It's not that long for laterals. Let's say three months to get trained in West Covina procedures and policies. So, that's why I say they don't, even if we hired 10 laterals tomorrow, they're not going to be on the streets, which doesn't help with our overtime. And so, my issue with this has been the fact that I have not been provided the numbers I need for this. We balanced our budget down to the absolute cent when we did the budget, and I already see holes in the numbers we have. And that scares me because I think our officers need to be in contract. I believe they deserve this raise. I believe we should be more competitive. I also believe I don't want to be sitting here a year from now discussing how many we're going to release because we can't afford it. And that is the unknown that scares me. Speakers have come up and brought up the tax, and some continue to misquote me. There's a reporter sitting here who wrote an article that actually quotes me correctly, so they can talk to him if they would like. But I said at this point, I was not going, well, none of your business, that I wasn't going to share, that I wanted the signature gathering process to be finished before I said how I feel about it. And how I feel about it is that the tax is absolutely needed. There is no way we can dig ourselves out of the hole that other councils have put the city in. We have perds going up year after year, contributions we have to make. We have officers, firefighters, working themselves to the bone for our city. So, this raise is absolutely necessary. And what really hits me in the gut is I can't vote for it because I don't know our numbers. And ultimately, I have a responsibility to all of you, but my ultimate responsibility is to the city, and that's to make sure that when we give something, we can afford it. You know, if this had been after the tax, when we knew that we were actually getting revenue, this would be a no-brainer. I will be out helping to get this tax passed because I want to be able to fulfill the commitments that are being offered here, and if the council votes for it. The other thing I wanted to hit on is, people want to hit the POA and, you know, this tax is all about raises for them. No, it's not. I have spent hours sitting with these officers, talking about the department, asking how they feel. And the number-one thing from the beginning was, they want West Covina Police Department to be back to what it was. The agency that people came to and stayed with, the agency that people were proud to work for, the agency that they loved to go to work for in a community that loved them. Not once was it, "We want more money." Ever. Period. So, to have community members come up here and say, you know, "This is all about the money. They have these PACs, that they're using these PACs." The POA is not allowed to use their own funds for doing this measure. It has to go through a PAC. That's the law. It isn't anything underhanded, something they're not allowed to do. It's just the way you do it. And so, they're doing it the way it needs to be done. And quite frankly, the reason I didn't come out is because I wanted to see the buy-in from the police department and the fire department on this tax, because ultimately, yes, they will be the main beneficiaries. And by them being the main beneficiaries means more officers on our streets, more firefighters, hopefully bringing the overlap shift back, taking a little bit of the burden off of our budget when it comes to the pension obligations. That's how the community sees it, but it will go through them. So, I wanted to see the buy-in from them. And yes, there were some missteps with the hired signature gatherers. They realized that. But it just goes to show you that they're not professional petitioners. This was them doing it for the first time. Were mistakes made? Yes. Did it ultimately matter when it comes to how many signatures were gathered? No. Because they got their feet on the ground. Police and fire walked and got most of the signatures at the end when they saw the community complaints and misunderstandings with the paid signature gatherers. And so, while I cannot support this at this time, I want to say thank you to our police officers, who I see mostly here, and any fire who are here, for the work that you do. You deserve this raise, and I wish with all of my heart that I could support it, but we do not have the money to support it right now. So, I'll see you on the streets with the tax, because should this pass, it becomes even more important that it passes.
Thank you. Can you explain, I know that there's this idea that people will just come in right away. Can you explain how the recruitment process is going currently and what are the numbers looking like, you know, hiring these new recruitments, whether it's lateral?
I'm going to ask the chief to come down, if I may.
Thank you. If you could explain the full process, including the new hires and the laterals, and how many we're recruiting in.
Well, the chief is coming down. I'd just like to share our perspective. I think recruitment is obviously important. Lateral can be a good technique, but this city has attempted to hire laterals who haven't passed muster, haven't been able to pass this city's high standards or the background test. So, I'm recommending this tonight because I think our very best move is to keep the officers we have.
I just want to know what numbers are looking like.
Thank you. Firstly, let me start by saying, since October of last year, we've lost 12 officers, okay? We have three slated to leave us by January, one of which is retirement, the other two are leaving for other reasons. And with our current, with the rest of our current officers, we have another eight that is looking. Last year, we cut our overlap shift down to try to curtail overtime, which we were able to do. And yes, now we are below those numbers. The problem is, is I'm losing officers faster than I can get them in. So, the process is very difficult. So, we'll get, just to put it in perspective, we'll have a testing process where 100, 106 applicants will say, "Hey, I want a job." We'll put the testing out, and maybe 50 will show up. And the reason is because these applicants that put in for jobs, they're putting in for jobs all over the county. And so, when everyone's throwing the test, they just go wherever they feel that they want to work. So, of the 50 that we get, we send them to a process where we have certain questions and interviews that we send them to to make sure that they're worthy to be here. And of that, we may get 15 in the interview. Once the interview process takes place and we put them in backgrounds, we may get two out of that that we can actually either send to the academy, and if it's a lateral, put them in training. And then they have to pass the training. We refuse to lower the standards on training. We believe that we have a very good police department. We want to keep it that way. We want to make sure that the people, the men and women that we bring in here, that they're able to do the job that we ask them, and we don't have to worry about them when they're on the street. And sometimes, the two that we do get, we lose one out of that. So, you can see that process repeats itself over and over and over again. My concern is, if we continue at the rate we're going, I'm going to have to make another adjustment to our patrol staff, which is not going to fare well to our citizens. Our job is to protect the citizens of West Covina. I love this city. I've been here for over 20 years now. It's like a second home to me, and I want to make sure that we put the best on the street and that we have the guys that can support that. The process doesn't change. It is what it is. But I do believe that in, given the voting for this tonight, that we will be able to get better-qualified applicants. Right now, laterals are our best bet, and as of lately, it's kind of dried up. We're getting what we call recruits. The process for a recruit is, they don't have any law enforcement experience, which means we have to hire them. They have to go through a six-month-plus academy. Then they have to go through training, and then we have to put them on the street. Sometimes that can take nine, 10, 11 months. It just depends on the applicant. So, we want to get laterals in here. We want to be competitive in the market. We want them to know that we have the best police department out there, and I believe that this goes a long way in doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I remember we approved a budget, okay, it's what, 99 staff, right?
Sorry, we are authorized 99, yes.
Okay, and I know in the same size of city, like El Monte, they have about 123, but we only can afford 99. Okay, that's our current situation. And occurring 99, how many staff we have right now? Because I know we're losing quite a few, okay, currently.
So, currently, we have 78 bodies on the street.
Seventy-eight?
Of the 99. We do have eight that is injured on duty, some of which is long-term. I can't get into why, but that affects us as well. So, of the 99, eight being IOD, the rest are positions that we have to fill. 78 bodies on the street is significantly low for our city.
For the 17 square miles, 120,000 population?
Yes.
Well, you only have 78, plus somebody have a sick, okay, or this and that. So, meaning we really, we're so thin. So, in that way, then our overtime, right now, I think we have a major issue with overtime, right?
Our overtime has increased. When we got rid of overlap, we were able to structure the police department where we could put nine bodies on a shift, and we were able to curtail the overtime when two bodies are off. We are even right now. So, that means when someone takes off, it is incurring overtime.
Since I... And since I got the number, I was shocked that, I was thinking about our police officer pay kind of medium, maybe a little bit lower, maybe in the middle. But when I see with comparison, we're down to like 10 or 9. If you see the salary, we even behind, okay, Monterey Park. Okay, we behind El Monte, okay, we behind Azusa, okay, and Weta. Okay, and then I understand why the police officers, okay, will decide to move to all the city for a little bit, maybe, okay, the city, okay, they pay them, and plus, okay. And I understand, I think I discussed with you my concern, okay, regarding how can we recruit? Because I think we talked about, my agenda is overtime, 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 and how can we recruit, recruit, recruit? And you told me currently, our package is not attractive.
That's just part of it. We have put together a recruiting team, and we have some other things that are coming forward, which we'll be able to present here later with some videos and things like that. But, you know, these young officers are very savvy. They do shop around. They do look at other departments. They do look at what other departments have to offer. West Covina has always been that agency. I think Ms. Schumaker has basically stated the go-to department. I consider West Covina the jewel of San Gabriel Valley. I want to keep it that way. Right now, we're in a crisis. We need to retain bodies, and we need to hire.
Since I live in West Covina more than 30 years, okay, I heard about, okay, our proud West Covina PD. Once upon a time, everybody wanted to work for us, okay? And I remember when I lived, 2:00, 3:00, 5:00, back in 1990, okay, my neighbor has a music, and I called five minutes, they show up. Okay, and I think that time, we have about 120, okay, five police officers. But right now, we're down to the bone. So, if you have that issue, I think very difficult for them to show up, okay? And right now, with the crime issue, okay, I see every day, you call me 2:30 in the morning about the major accident. And then that is really a problem for our city. And we have our police officers really spread too thin. And I've been encouraged, say, can we recruit more? So, we can reduce the force overtime and plus, reduce the budget of the overtime. So, how you think, what is the best way, okay, we can kind of, we, okay, get this thing? I know, like you said, the crisis, okay, and?
This is just one symptom of many problems that we have. Recruitment and retention is my responsibility, which is what we're focusing on now. We do have, I think someone mentioned, we do have a few bodies that are in the process. One just started the academy, so we won't see him for a year and a half. We have two that just finished the academy. They're still several months away, and we have a few more that are in backgrounds. Now, those individuals that are in backgrounds, there's no proven way to know that they're going to make it, but I am surely hopeful that they will. And I just want to say this. Back in 2008, we had 127 or 128 officers. And here in 2019, we authorized 99, but we're down to 78. That's a pretty significant blow to the police department.
So, final question. If, I don't know the vote, but if we approve, how soon you can get this recruitment and the retention? What kind of promise you can give to us? How soon we can have the staff? Okay, because again, again, public safety is fundamental of the quality of life. If the city doesn't have a public safety, why we need government?
Well, as far as giving you a promise and a date, I can't do that. What I can tell you is that the city becomes more attractive. We have a very good culture here. These guys are out recruiting like crazy. We can get the officers in and get them trained up. I could not stand here today and tell you that by, you know, January, we're going to have five-plus officers. But what I can tell you is that if our package is right, that officers do seek us out because West Covina does still have a reputation.
Okay, got it. Okay, and I have a question for the city manager. Thank you so much, chief.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now, here's, I think, the concern by the resident, okay, and by, I think, city council too, regarding, okay, do we have this money? Okay, and then, because for me, I don't count on the sales increase. My, okay, I calculate, as a business owner, I calculate how much I have, how much result I have, okay? And how can we, okay, get by? And because when you approve this, this money will stay, okay? And we will continue to recruit. I understand, okay, in that way, if we can recruit more, then I can compensate by the reduced overtime. And the chief already promised, okay, in that way. So, from the city manager and our chief of finance, okay, can we afford it? Because the point is, okay, some people talking about, if we do this, we're going to bankrupt. Okay, I kind of disagree, okay, as a business owner. But as the city manager, the chief of staff, how you think?
Also, if we can sustain it, not only just see if we could afford it, but just sustain it throughout.
I'm going to ask Robin to join me in this answer, but I'd like to begin by saying, yes, the city can afford this. We presented to you this year, and you adopted a balanced budget. It's very closely balanced. My tradition, my goal would be to have a budget with an operating margin of 5%. We're underfunded. We have a lot of unfunded liabilities that we're going to address. I think one of the ways we'll do it, even if the tax measure doesn't pass, is by, we're going to continue to find initiatives. We're going to continue to find economies and efficiencies in city operation. And we're going to be bringing those to you, continue to bring those to you. So far in this fiscal year, we're three months in it. You've privatized building and safety. You've privatized city engineering. We're quickly going to be in front of the Audit and Finance Committee with updated numbers for pension obligation bonds because we're carrying $185 million worth of unfunded liability at 7% at CalPERS. We think with a simple, well, complicated interest rate refinance, we can bring that number down by going in the bond market. All of these things combined, I think will continue to put us in a place where we can afford this action, which is recommended tonight. And Robin, if I've missed anything, please contribute.
So, I think the one thing that I want to say, and I want to clear up, is by being out of contract since December 16, we've fallen behind the market. And I don't think we can afford not to do this. It's becoming a public safety issue because we can't recruit and retain. We don't have full staffing levels. And the money, we are not depending on the tax measure being passed. That's not what this is about. We will get the money by doing some of these other things that the city manager mentioned. The pension obligation bonds alone, by doing a refinance, basically, of that debt and paying a much lower interest rate will save us, I think, between 3 and 5 million the first year. So, I'm confident that we'll be able to do this without the tax measure.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to see the exodus of police stop. And I believe in our city manager and our CFO. And we need to be able to recruit some laterals. We can't keep operating with overtime. Our officers are going to get exhausted, as they already are. And we need to change that. We need to be in contract. Thank you.
And I just want to comment, okay? And like last year, I talking about, sometime you have to think out of the box, okay? Like say, hey, we spend the money, are we going to, the money maybe we don't have? And are we going to bankrupt, okay? And when it is tough times, should we spend the money at all, or should we cut? Okay, and I remember last year, I clearly said before, when the time is tough, you need to be aggressive. You have to think out of the box and invest. Like my company, okay, sometime I go up and down. Then when there is the tough time, you're not going to cut all your staff. I keep my staff. I go to my bank and make sure my staff, okay, will stay with us. And when now, the interest rate low, now I'm left into the bank because we have a low interest where everybody want to do a refi. Think about, I keep those staff. I didn't lay them off. So, the time when this situation we have the city, we need our public safety, and we need to be compatible with the pay. And I don't want to spend the money. I want to save as much as I can. But if we cannot, and basically, if we don't have the staff, what kind of a city is? How can we protect our residents? How can I bring more business to our city if we don't have a basic, fundamental quality of life, of public safety? So, this is so important. I think the investment for them, and for three years out of contract, now we give them some basic respect. I think it's a good investment. I think this is going to bring us back to the level, not only the respect by the public safety community, we can attract more of our staff, okay, and to work with our city. I want to bring back the proud West Covina PD, or even proud West Covina Fire Department, because that is our left and right hand to support our city and support our residents, to support, to protect our family. So, in that way, I surveyed this, I think a long time, I go to all the number, okay? And I can easily see, and then discuss with, okay, CM and Robin, regarding, can we do this? How can we do it? And for that, I will support, okay, to have this MOU, to have this contract with our, okay, police. And we move from there, united to recruit us. And those, our staff going to work so hard for us because they know they have been appreciated by our residents since we represent the resident. And that is protect our city, bring more business, bring more revenue. Thank you so much.
Okay, I want to wait till last. Oh, no, go ahead, first. I want to be.
Okay. I just want to reiterate again that I believe our police department needs this. I believe that we need it for retention. But you just heard the exact reason I have to vote no. We have things in the pipeline, so we'll be able to afford it. Things like pension obligation bonds have to come to the council to approve. There hasn't been a discussion up here amongst the council on whether or not that's something we'd be interested in. You know, if this discussion happened after the pension obligation bonds, then at least I'd know that this was in place, and we have the money with or without the tax at this point. And maybe it's just because I come from a different agency, okay? I hate to always bring up the school board, but when we were in negotiations, we were told, this is what the district can afford. This is what we're going to offer, and this is where we hope we settle. And this is what it's going to cost us three, four years out, so we could show that we can afford it. So, the contract, I believe, is fair if the city, on the city side, we had done our work. And so, it sounds like it's going to pass. And I congratulate you and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you. Like I was starting to say, which is fine. You know, this is kind of emotional for all sides. You know, I've lived in the city of West Covina for going on 50 years, longer than most of our police officers have been alive. But do I have respect for every one of them? Yes, I do. Do, in a way, are we? When I first lived here, we had over 120-some police officers. Chief Mencham was with our police chief when I moved to West Covina. So, I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot of changes. One thing I've never seen change is the quality of police officers we have. I remember all the motorcycle police officers we have. We don't have them. I think we have, what, one or two, something like that, in the whole city. We don't get the revenue off of some of the things they can do because we don't have a police officer out there patrolling our cities to stop all the law enforcement that's being broken. So, do I feel that sometimes we make decisions that we should stand back and take a look at? Yes, we do. But this is one that I'm going to take a leap of faith. I am going to support this tonight. Why? Because I do believe that we have the best police officers you can get out there. Do I want to keep the best police officer we have out there? Yes, we do. I heard from the chief that we're probably losing three more. I know there were six more at one time. He was able to stop. Three of them decided they wanted to stay. But if we can't show our police officers that we care about them, that we want to make it worthwhile for them, we want to be able to recruit other police officers to come in. By laterals, yes. I prefer them more than any because they're already trained. They're already professionals. And the only way we can do that is by being able to afford them the living that they need to make, so. And I look at it a different way, guys, all of you. I am a disabled Vietnam veteran. When I was in Vietnam, walking through the rice paddies, I had a bullseye on my back the whole time I was there. Our police officers, every time they're out on the street, they have a bullseye on their back. They take their lives in their hand every time they get out there. And this is one way for me to say, thank you. I'm taking a leap of faith that we will have the finances to support this. So, at this time, tonight, I will be supporting this. So, if we have no other comments, maybe?
Move the motion to approve?
And I want to second it. So, we have a motion, a second, we have all, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Pass it forward, one.
We look forward to have more police officers out there. If I may? Thanks, guys and ladies and gentlemen. But we got to finish up here. Give them a minute. Okay, that is the end of our consent calendar. Is there any AB 11234s, whatever they have? None? 1, 2, 3, 4. Do I have any comments or any mother may eyes from the council? See you none, or adjourned?